Important stuff, you know.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year and welcome to our first council meeting of 2025. If you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson?
It's by our heads. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you for the new year. Father, we thank you for life. God, we say a special prayer for this community, members of council, and our staff, that we go into the new year, Father, with the hearts and the minds to do what's absolutely necessary and what's in the best interest of the people that we serve. And God, we just pray for all the families this holiday season, that they know who you are and they understand what you are. And God, we just lift up our elected officials all around the world, both past, present, and future. In Jesus' name, amen.
I'd like to call to order our January 2nd, 2025 council meeting. We'll begin tonight with a consideration to approve the agenda for the meeting. I do need to add one item to new business, and that would be new business item D, and that is discussion and possible action on resolution to endorse Cherokee County State Road and Tollway Authority Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank funding application for construction of airport road spur. Are there any additional changes?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We do have two public hearings this evening prior to our business meeting, and we'll begin with a public hearing for item A. Public hearing for case CUP 2410-005, request to construct 208 townhome units along Misty Way and Misty Court. Mr. Green.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, and happy new year. Has the mayor just read this? This is a conditional use permit application. The applicant is requesting to construct 208 townhomes fee simple on the property along Misty Way and Misty Court. If you may recall, back in 2022, some of you are on the board here, and an application came in seeking an apartment complex of 298 units. That request was denied. The owner took the course to Kate, to the case to court, and the judge sided with the city. Presently, there are 14 structures on the property, which accounts for 28 living units. There, with the number of units they're requesting, that does require two points of ingress egress, and these will have to conform to the fire code. Right now, there's some, with the site plan that's been submitted, that is not met, so that will have to be tinkered with a little bit should this application be approved. It can certainly be conditioned that it meet the international fire code if it is so approved. The existing density or the existing zoning is RM15, which is residential multifamily, which allows up to 15 units per acre. Based on the acreage that is out there, it would be possible for them to ask for 339 units. I know that Mr. Huff is here tonight to make the presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can, and if not, provide you with the information at a later date.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Just a reminder, in our public hearings, there are each side, people speaking in support, including the applicant and opposition, have 10 minutes each. Mr. Ingram will be our timer this evening, and we will begin, I will open public hearing for case CUP 2410-005, request to construct 280 townhome units along Misty Way and Misty Court. Ms. Truff?
Good evening. Is it still halftime?
Speak fast.
I'm gonna keep your eyes on me. Don't look at the screen. I've got a short presentation I'd like to run through you real quick. Here it is. So this is a property some of you've seen before. It's on State Route 20 Knox Bridge Highway, and it's sandwiched between a property that's owned by the Development Authority and the school board. Their, the Development Authority is right now developing an industrial park there. This shows the entrance way, and to the left is the entrance to the school that's now an alternative school with a lot of online learning and such, and the signalized intersection there. This is a real important slide. This shows that we are sandwiched, it's owned RM15, which as your staff said, it's residential multifamily up to 15 units per acre. That's the zoning. It was zoned that way when it was annexed, and this was the bridge to annex to get the River Green community. So to get River Green to the city limits, this was the bridge, and it was designated for multifamily development at the time. It's got several duplexes on it, but it's very heavily underutilized, older infrastructure, and sandwiched between the SU, the special use, and the light industrial, which is the industrial park that is currently being developed by the Development Authority or about to be developed. This is the 296 apartment proposal. A lot of the feedback that we received at that time was, we really are tired of only for rent as the option for people living in the city, and we want to encourage more ownership. So the property has been looked at by many clients. Ashton Woods, when they talked to me about it, I said, that's great. You only build in a for-sale environment, and Ashton Woods is a well-respected, their Atlanta division, they're national, but their Atlanta division is very strong. They build great communities, and so this is a proposal to build 208 townhomes, and they will be for-sale townhomes. And again, it's sandwiched between industrial park and this. This is the architectural rendering. They're a, I hate to kind of use these terms, but a lot of be considered a starter home, a first home, more affordable than some other homes. This is a three-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath. It appeals to a young buyer. I was challenged one time recently where someone said, well, who wants to live in a townhome? And I didn't think of the response, but I thought of it on the drive home. My son, 27, bought a townhome. He now has a townhome where he owns the property. He's got equity in it because of the increase in value over a period of time. That's exactly the buyer you're looking for, is younger people who can buy, so they build equity, they have control over escalating rent and things like that. So that's exactly what this product and what Ashton does a good job of doing. We had the public input meeting represented from, that was from the development group for Green, River Green was there. They wanted to make sure it was a for-sale product. They didn't have any other, any concerns once they understood it was a for-sale product. And then the community on the opposite side of 20, their Canton Heights community, which is a combination of townhomes and single, townhome and tight-lot detached product, was also concerned about the access, ensuring that our access points were separated enough that there wouldn't be a conflict, and that really resulted in even a more dialogue about the realities of what this section of road is. You know that GDOT has a plan that's moving forward to make this a median on this State Route 20. So both these subdivisions in the very near future will be right in, right out, and median, which is great for traffic safety. And so the reality is, is that we won't be selling a home for probably two years, based upon the timeline of when GDOT expects to be coming on this coming forward. It's unlikely that we would even be selling homes prior to the median being there, but it would in fact be a much safer feature once the median is in place, everybody's right in, right out, get to signalized intersection and make your turns there. I went through your development standards or your comp plans and just picked out some of the languages that I thought were, this is under the neighborhood living area. This area is not, like River Green is suburban living, this is neighborhood living, which anticipates more density, more intensity. So I looked at some of the language in your comprehensive plan, permit redevelopment in appropriate areas in order to allow for denser housing types in smaller lots. That's what we have here. Encourage the development of homes near public transportation, shopping areas in order to reduce on-mail trips. We don't have transport, we do have transportation improvements that are coming along here. We do have nearby shopping and nearby work also. And then economic development, target reinvestment to declining existing neighborhoods, vacant or underutilized sites or buildings in preference to new economic development projects. Seek a balance to balance the housing and employment, and then consider the location of housing and location to employment. This is from your comp plan under the neighborhood living. This fits into that. You've got a group of duplexes that are way underutilized, that are way past their lifespan, and to be able to redevelop that into a new neighborhood of townhomes that would be attractive to young buyers, empty nesters, single parents, the number, non-custodial parents, the number of people that would be attracted to this housing is wide and is needed. It's a housing type that is needed, and to be able to place it in an area that is not butting up against a low-density residential, because that's normally where you get your conflicts, your up against low-density residential. It's an opportunity to be able to do what your comp plan says, which is put higher density in an area that is anticipated on. It aligns with the infrastructure improvements that are coming along with 20. It aligns with the job creation that you've got going on in the city with the robotics plan and all the stuff up at Airport Industrial, but also the industrial park that's being built by the Development Authority directly next door. So you can't have a better story than to put housing close to where you're about to get some more in commercial industrial-type development. So we think that this complies with your goals of your comp plan. I also note that this is, this is a neighborhood living Oakdale in RM15 is a specific zoning category that's anticipated. So your comp plan anticipates this types of density, anticipates this type of use, and it's an opportunity to put housing in an appropriate location that's planned for by your co, co, staff comment about the fire code and compliance with the fire code. We will, of course, comply with the fire code. There's a couple different ways that we would address that. One with a boulevard entrance would be one way to handle that. Another would be to change the access, and we do have an agreement with the school board for interpartial access, and that's, I believe, works both, not I believe, it works both directions, because the school only has one access point, and they, I think, recognize that they would like to have an emergency secondary access point, and they've always, throughout the working on this property, they've always been very helpful and agreeable to interpartial emergency access through their property because it works both directions. It provides them with emergency access through our property, just like it would allow us emergency access through their property. So those are a couple ways that we can handle, but of course, we will comply with the fire code and appendix D is the correct code there. So we think we've got a project that responds to the criticisms about a bunch of rental in this area and the desire to encourage homeownership, which gets equity in homes, and encourages people to stay in the community and work in the community and grow with the community in a responsible way and in compliance with your comprehensive plan. And so we appreciate your consideration of this case, and we'll be glad to answer any questions. Glad to provide any more details that we can, can have, add to it also. So thank you for your time. I reserve whatever I have left responding.
Thank you, Ms. Tuff. It'll be one minute. We do have one citizen signed up to speak. Is that in favor, in opposition? Opposition? So we'll come forward.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Thomas Weaver. I reside here at 131 Old Mary Georgia, and I rise in respectful opposition to the proposal that's been submitted by Ashton Homes and as presented by their legal counsel, Mr. Huff. Mr. Huff used the word attractive multiple, multiple times throughout his presentation, and sure, I too acknowledge and concede some several points that are well-taken in his presentation. It moved from a rental to a fee simple ownership, attractive, and it also looks to make use of property where about half of the parcels are currently vacant. Purportedly, that's attractive also, but I would remind council that an approbation of council's adopted roadmap for success, that it's not just creating homes, but it's creating great neighborhoods, and I don't think this is the best way to do that for the points that I'm going to share with you now. If you look at the map, you'll see, as Mr. Huff conceded on his paperwork that he filed as part of his application on behalf of his client, that all four of the parcels surrounding the proposed building parcel are all owned and operated by other governmental units, the Cherokee County School District, the Cherokee County Building Authority, the state of Georgia, and also the United States federal government with the Corps of Engineers for Lake Allatuna. All four of those parcels then are beyond the control of the city, and in order to, for the city to do anything with those parcels, you would have to receive the consent and permission of those other governmental units. I don't think it would be too very attractive, at least for one, transportation. As we know, the Olympiad that our city engineer had to run through just to get a red light, I don't think it's too very attractive for what you would have to do to get any improvements there on the state highway in front of the project, and I believe that this was the main point of contention that led two currently seated members of this council to deny the request in a very close three-to-three tie-breaking vote with the mayor about two years ago. Moreover, when Mr. Huff stated that they can work with the city to skirt the city's requirements for two entrances based on the city's fire code and other building code rules that's outlined in our zoning code, I would invite the city council to take that with a grain of salt, and I would invite council to apply a sincere level of strict scrutiny against or a thumped bias against granting such a variance or a request, even if it could be amended in the, in the proposed architect's map. After all, we have our zoning code and rules for a reason. When we start outlining that we were, if you have, want to build this many homes, you have to have this many exits, and then you say, well, we'll work with you to get around that. I just think that that starts off our brand-new year on a bad foot and sets the wrong precedent, that we're just going to allow anyone to come in and say, well, you didn't really mean what you said when you was up, when you adopted your zoning code. You didn't really mean it when you put your fire code. You didn't really mean it when you put in your streets requirements. You didn't mean it. It's no big deal, whatever. I just think that's a bad way to start the new year, and I would ask that this council hold each and every applicant who is desirous to add value to it by bringing new homes or new developments into our city, or who wishes to annex parcels into our city so they can build new homes, or also new creative or innovative ideas that would add value to making Canton the coolest town in America, that you hold those developers accountable to the rules and regulations and ordinances that you go through all the trouble of spelling out. So I concede the point well-taken, that Ashton Homes is a reputable builder, and they have quality work throughout all of Metro Atlanta and many throughout Alpharetta and other places in North Fulton County, and I concede that there is a point for diversified housing options in Canton's marketplace by reaching different audiences and providing those different price points. And not to be redundant, but again, I too acknowledge that fee simple ownership is far more desirous to council, and council's made that clear, as Mr. Huff also said in his presentation, as opposed to rentals. But if we have ordinances and we have requirements, I say that council enforce them, and the product, as it's been presented to you now, whether for better or for worse, unfortunately, doesn't meet those fire code rules, doesn't meet the entrance and exit rules. The city can't control any of the four neighboring parcels because those are under the control of competing governments, which may, in a change of leadership, have competing interests, and I think that saying, well, we'll just, we'll just kind of splice in an entrance or exit there to the school, I just don't think that's the right way to go about doing that. If council wishes to do so, council could perhaps ask staff, if staff could go back to the applicant to see if they could lower the number of homes that would only require one entrance or exit as currently presented, based on, perhaps that might be a viable option to kind of meet in the middle, but to say, well, we'll just get around stuff and no big deal, and just vote for it anyway. I would invite council to please decline to do so, and I would ask that the two seated members of council who formerly declined this project for the same traffic-related reasons, hold those to heart if you're asked to move for a vote. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for recognizing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. The applicant like to respond? You have one minute.
Yeah, just a quick response. First off, this is not a rezoning case because this is already zoned RM15, so you're not looking at what's the appropriate zoning category. It's already zoned this category. We're asking for a conditional use permit, and the easement for the school board property has already been approved by the school board. I mean, that's, that's the question statement that we can't, that they can't be forced to do anything. They've agreed to it in two different forms, but it's currently this form. They've agreed to this easement, so that's not a question here. So the proposal, I mean, this is, as he said, it's all surrounded by other government properties, and this is the perfect place to put in a higher-density housing type that is needed, that will provide housing opportunities for people that currently don't have a purchasing housing opportunity option in a, in a location that's not butting up against a single-family deep, you know, a lower-density deep that.
Mayor, this time.
They might be concerned with that. So appreciate your time, consideration. Thank you.
We'll now close the public hearing and open up to council for questions and comments. Mr. Green, I have a couple of questions to start out concerning the entrance. Anything over 124 requires two entrances, correct?
Yes, sir.
Does the easement through the school board property, is that, is that counting as a permanent entrance, or?
We had discussed that back in 2022, and that was an acceptable, I mean, a means of ingress egress. Since that time, the school board, and I believe their legal representation, are looking for some stronger language as opposed to just a simple ingress egress easement there. We have had contact with Mitch Hamilton from the school board, and they are still open to that possibility.
Okay. And as Mr. Huff mentioned, this is not a rezoning case, only a conditional use permit case, in fact, that the parcels currently zoned for multifamily. Could you inform us, I mean, right now, I know there are duplexes on the sites, and the, and the parcel could accommodate more duplexes without council approval, correct?
Correct.
Do you have an estimate on how many total duplexes could be constructed on the parcel as it exists? Approximately? Mr. Ingram?
Yeah, if I may, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I've spoken with staff, and based on rough estimates right now, we believe the applicant could put approximately 75, maybe 80 units, which would mean about 150, 100, I'm sorry, 75 to 80 buildings, which would mean about 160 units.
Okay. So just confirm, the parcel could accommodate up to 150 duplex townhomes for sale, correct?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay.
With the size of the property, I think it was a little over 22 acres, they could have 339 units out there, but then after you back out a roadway and any buffers or setbacks.
Setbacks.
It would not be that many, but just, that's the potential.
Correct.
Awesome. And do we have any updates from DOT on schedule for improvements on, on 20, or do we have any idea? I mean, I know it's like.
I have not spoken with, with GDOT as to what their timeframe is for any roadway improvements, I believe, when we were, had another townhome project, I think they were looking at maybe five years down the road.
I think Ms. Watson would say more like 10, when it's done, it's done. So I think the comment of, you know, improvements being made by the time, in two years, by the time the, our building, being built, two years, the time the road improvements, we know the road improvements are going to take a lot longer than that. Other questions, comments?
Mr. Green, so Mr. Huff had mentioned that there was a public input meeting. Was anyone from the city in attendance for that?
Not to my knowledge, no, sir.
If you would, if you could coordinate with Mr. Huff to see what kind of questions were asked of the applicant?
Yes, he did furnish me with his input meeting report of this afternoon, and he did state that the two questions that were raised by the people was if the development would be a rental or a fee simple for-sale ownership, and the intention is for it to be a for-sale owner-occupied development.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Johnson?
So Mr. Huff mentioned about who the buyer was. I guess my first question is, do we know an approximate cost per square foot?
No, sir. We can certainly find out.
He mentioned three bedrooms, two-and-a-half bath, 1,500 square feet. I guess where I was going with that, with today's prices and the interest rates, I'm thinking about a first-year school teacher, and whatever that number is, we know what the median home price is for the city of Canton. If that number is $400,000 or $500,000, I'm just, just, I don't know what that number is, but just assuming that number is $400,000 or $500,000. Again, my question would be is, who's the buyer going to be for that if it's a first-time home buyer? Because a first-time home buyer is probably not going to be able to buy a $400,000 or $500,000 home. I guess the second thing that I'd like to bring up that he mentioned was, I did speak to a few residents this week, and he mentioned more density, more intensity, and I guess my question would be was, could we elaborate a little bit on that? Because when I hear more density, more intensity, my brain thinks traffic. So I just would want to make sure that we're, that we're on the same page as that, because he mentioned that this project aligns with the infrastructure improvements coming to Highway 20, but key word, coming. They're not here yet. So again, just a concern of mine and what I've heard from some of the constituents in my area, but any feedback you guys could give, certainly in regards to the final cost, would be very helpful.
Thank you. Mr. Roach?
Just, just a quick comment. I mean, the property's been zoned for multifamily for years, and the fact that somebody's going to come in and reduce the density for homeownership is pretty important to me, because otherwise, I think if it's denied, I mean, an investor would come in more than likely and put 150 or 160 rental units there. So you're going to reduce the density by a little bit, but there'll be no ownership. I mean, more than likely, they can't afford to build a duplex and sell them, you know, to individuals. It will probably just be another rental community. So I mean, I think, once we figure out what the price point is on the, on the townhome units themselves, I mean, that, that will be, you know, to give an idea of what, what can be afforded, you know, who can afford that. But I do like the fact that it's for sale for individual. But I do like the fact that it's for sale for individuals, and, and the density's going down. I understand you can't get three hundred and thirty-nine apartments there because of the setbacks and the topography, but it's still going to be greatly reduced from that. That's all.
Ms. McGrew?
Thank you. Mr. Green, in a community such as a, a single-family community, there's an HOA. Will there be an HOA for this community?
I would assume there would be, but I will, I will find that out.
Thank you. And further, in a community with an HOA, it's usually established that only a certain small percentage of the properties could become rental. I know Great Sky has a limit of properties that can be rental, so does Lowell Canyon. So I would like to see in the covenants of this development, should it pass, that a small percentage limiting the number of rentals in the community so that investors don't come in and gobble up the land and the units and sell them. Also, I'm looking at the, the plot here, plat, and it seems as though that every available foot of property is covered up with a unit. In our roadmap, it stated that we want to build great communities. And with a great community, there's green space and community gathering space with things, a play area, a grilling area, a swing area. So I don't see any space on this plat for that, and I believe that to have a community, a great neighborhood, and a neighborhood living environment, we need community gathering space.
Like an amenity area, so to speak?
Thank you.
Mr. Tolan?
Mr. Green, if you wouldn't mind, you may have it with you. If you don't, that's fine. I'd love to get the information. In 2022, when we heard the previous proposal, there were some conditions. Do you happen to have those conditions with you? I think some of them will apply, some of them won't, because it's a new product, it's a new application. But if you do have them, great, I'd love to hear them. If not, I'd love to get an email from you with the list of conditions that were on the previous project.
I do not have them with me, but I will get them to you.
Perfect, thank you.
Mr. Yon?
Yes, well, as with any project out there, as someone who drives that road twice a day, every day at least, my big concern is the traffic and bottlenecking. And so, I mean, I've heard Mr. Huff talk about an emergency exit into the school at the red light, and I think it would function a lot better if it was approved, that it would be a permanent entrance where people could access the red light and make a left-hand turn out. And because if, if it's only right in, right out, that means they're going up to the intersection in front of River Green and getting on Butterworth, and that road's got more than it can handle right now. And, or either that, or they're going in, trying to find, going into River Green, trying to turn around, or, anyway, they're bottlenecking, you've already bottlenecked intersections. So I would love to see some more thought given to making that a permanent, where you have, you can right in or right out, or you can go to the red light. So that's my two cents.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, thank you, Mr. Green. We'll move on to our second public hearing. Public hearing for cases CUP two four one one dash zero zero one and MPA two four one zero dash zero zero three, request to amend previously approved conditional use permit and master plan amendment to allow for fee simple ownership. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again. As you stated, these two cases are related to the same project that came before council about two or three years ago. Their application specifically requested and mentioned that the proposed community would be a rental community. So when the CUP resolution, resolution was drafted and the ordinance was prepared to accommodate this, the language, the language was in there that it would be a rental community. Now, the developer owner is seeking the ability to have fee simple or for sale townhomes or units in there as well. They're not looking for an increase or a decrease in the number of units, and they're also asking that some of the units could be detached, like a, by a single-family standalone
At this time, we will open the public hearing for cases CUP two four one one dash zero zero one and MPA two four one zero dash zero zero three, request to amend previously approved conditional use permit and master plan amendment to allow for fee simple ownership. And we'll begin our ten-minute in support with Mr. Huff again, so, thank you.
Okay.
Welcome back.
And I don't plan to take the ten minutes, because this is a fairly short thing and a short presentation. This was approved several years ago before I was involved, and it was requested to be a rental townhome community. It was approved, it said, you know, granted the CUP for a rental community. The owner has been marketing the property to different buyers, and the buyers have said, said that they have, would like to have the option to make it for sale. And so that's what we're coming back in and saying, can you, the CUP was narrowly written just specifically for, for rent. We want to be able to add for sale as a, as an option, and it comes into three situations. One is, you may have someone who just decides to buy it and make it an entire for sale community, may have someone who may do part for sale and part for rent. But the other component, which is not apparent, immediately obvious, is a lot of the communities that are being bought, built as rental communities, they all, all know that they're building an asset that could also, at some future time, be sold. So when a buyer looks at this to build a rental community, they also want to know if the market gets to the point where it makes more sense to sell after we maybe owned it a couple of years, they'd like that option. So they don't want to buy it without having that option already on the front end. So that's what the seller, and I'll be real clear, they don't have a buyer, but this is an idea, this is a problem they keep running into when they talk to buyers, is, you know, why can't we do rent, for sale as, and rental? And so that's a result of this request.
Thank you, Mr. Huff. Had no one sign up to speak in support or opposition, so we will close the public hearing and open up the council for questions and discussion. I think it's always a good sign when people find more value in single-family home ownership than in rentals, so it's just good to see the market agreeing with that. Any comments or any questions for Mr. Green on this case? Ms. McGrew?
Mr. Green, thank you. I admit my ignorance, I have no experience knowing anything about co-living with rental or fee simple property. If you could send an email and direct me where I can do some research on if these projects are well-received, work out, how their future is, is it going to trend out? If you can just head me in the right direction, I'd appreciate it.
Certainly.
Anything else? Mr. Waterman?
Mr. Green, and if you could also clarify and attach to the same email, is there a certain percentage that they're looking for to be fee simple?
I do not know that, but we can certainly ask Mr. Huff or his applicant.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Green. We will now move into our regular business meeting agenda. You have in your council meeting draft minutes from our December nineteenth meeting, meeting. Sir, are there any changes, revisions, or motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. We have two informational items this evening. This is just information from staff on upcoming cases. This is for your information only, there'll be no discussion. Beginning with item A, information only, cases CUP two four one one dash zero zero four and ZCA two four one one dash zero zero three, request for conditional use permit and zoning condition amendment for River Green pods J one and J two for the construction of ninety-five townhomes and six single-family detached homes. Mr. Green?
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you just stated, the applicant is looking for a zoning condition amendment to allow these two pods, which were originally approved for single-family detached homes, to be a combination mainly townhomes, a ninety-five, and six single-family detached homes. The CUP obviously is looking for approval of the townhomes, and I believe, I'm quite certain, this is the last large pod in the River Green development that is yet to be developed. They will be coming back with more information, the current staff report will have more meat to it on the next go-round.
Thank you, sir. Again, item B, information only, cases ZCA two four one two dash zero zero two and MPA two four one two dash zero zero one, request for zoning condition amendment and master plan amendment to add four point eight one acres to the previously approved Park Village master plan.
Right. Let's see, zoning condition amendment, ZCA twenty-four twelve dash oh oh two is looking to add about four point six acres to the previously approved Park Village master plan. Park Village was approved back in the early two thousands. Mr. Becker has purchased this property from the Development Authority, I believe, and is looking to incorporate that into his industrial campus. The master plan amendment is also looking to incorporate this property into his previously approved development. And it is anticipated that they will also be filing a conditional use permit for his residential development that is going to be on the north side of Technology Ridge Parkway. I expect to get that tomorrow, and that will be part of the public hearing in February.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Move on to announcements. I do have one announcement. I'd like to announce that I will be giving my annual State of the City address on January twenty-ninth at six thirty PM at the Canton Theater, and hope you all will join us for hopefully a very informative evening, reviewing our, some of our successes and challenges in two, twenty twenty-four, and giving you a sneak preview of what's to come in twenty twenty-five. So please join me for the State of the City address. Any other announcements? We had no one sign up for our ten-minute public input, so we will move forward into old business. We have one item to discuss, discussion and possible action on procurement policy for the federal and state-funded transportation projects. Ms. Watson, welcome.
So as you may recall, I believe it was last month, I came and asked for approval to submit the LAP application. I submitted that LAP application, and GDOT let me know that I had, we had approved and signed an outdated procurement policy. So I have, this is the new updated one. It's, it's all the same information, it's just written differently and requires a little bit more signatures from the mayor. So I'm just asking for approval to move forward with the, the new procurement policy.
Thank you, Ms. Watson, and you would like approval on that this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Watson?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, please, for us to approve Ms. Watson to move forward with the procurement policy.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
We have four items of new business this evening. Item A, discussion of private to public street application for the summit at Town Mill. Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, again. As you stated, the HOA at the summit at Town Mill has submitted an application asking the city to take over a maintenance of their currently private streets. I believe there is a main street and two side cul-de-sacs. According to their report, all the structural issues or maintenance issues have been resolved. I believe Ms. Watson has, has been out there and has inspected the streets, the pavement, curb, gutter, catch basin, sidewalks, and I believe her initial report is, everything seems to be in a really good shape. So this item will be placed on the next agenda for consideration to accept their request or, or denial.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green. Mr. Ingram, can you give us a little bit of history on this development and concerning the roads, and I believe it was approved as a, as a private gated community? Is that correct?
Yeah, I'd be more than happy to, Mayor. At the summit at Town Mill, there are approximately eighty homes, eighty-three, I believe, to be exact. Those homes are less than about five years old. There are three distinct streets within that community totaling of about seven tenths of a mile, I believe that, that's correct, Ms. Watson. There are approximately twenty-five streetlights. I would like to point out to council, if the city were to take ownership and possession of those streets and infrastructure, that we will be taking possession and maintenance responsibilities of not just the roads, but the sidewalks, the curbs, the catch basins, and the stormwater infrastructure. And I will like to remind council that when, back a number of years ago, when the city did take ownership of some of these streets within various communities around Canton, we did, at that time, prepare an add-on fee to all the new developments within those communities. I just want to point out, though, that, that the summit was not included in those add-on fees.
And was that, they were not included because it was a gated community, so?
Yes, sir.
Any additional questions or comments? Ms. McGrew?
Are all of the residents in favor of this? Thank you.
Anything else?
I do have one question. Either whoever wants to take it, Mr. Green, Mr. Ingram, or even Mr. Dyer. So there is an inherent risk when a city considers a move from private to public streets. We have, I believe, four in the city, and I really want to understand a little bit better. We've had some email traffic back and forth, but I want to understand a little bit better what the, what the potential implications could mean if council approved this move from private to public streets to these other three communities, potentially.
Any, you're referring to any precedent being set? I don't think there'd be a legal precedent, would there?
No. Just because you accept these, but we changed the ordinance at one point to require that private streets be built to the standards of any other street. So that was an issue at first, as we were taking in some private streets, but, no, it's a case-by-case thing.
And I understand, in, in Ms. Watson's analysis, these streets were built to public standards. So that, that's a, that's a good thing.
As, as well as sidewalks as well, Ms. Watson?
Yes.
Thank you.
And there were some, in fact, one more thing, there were, were some issues, I think Ms. Watson had identified, and those have been mitigated, I understand. Is that correct, Ms. Watson?
Or I believe that, I believe they have it within their budget to mitigate any of those issues.
Okay, thank you.
I do believe that, like, the, the precedence would be other private communities that were approved as a private community that are paying for the streets and roads. Would be encouraged if this was approved to, to have the city adopt their roads and assume maintenance for, for the city and roads and streets and related items, as, as Mr. Ingram mentioned, so. Ms. McGrew?
Do you know if the residents or the city will be paying for the removal of the gate?
I know, ma'am, that will be on the, on the Town Mill Summit HOA to pony up for that cost.
Mr. Green, can you tell me if that gate is still functional, still being used?
I don't believe I've ever seen it closed. I have seen it damaged several times with people running into it, so that may be one of the reasons that it's not closed. I know when construction was active out there, the gates were often run into by, by construction traffic.
I believe they've had issues pretty much since the start on that gate.
Yes.
And could you remind me? And could you remind me, is this community, is it age restricted?
I don't believe so, but I can certainly find out.
I believe it was originally developed to be age restricted. I don't know if the.
It was marketed, it was marketed to.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Green. Item B, discussion and possible action on resolution of supporting authorizing, preparation, submission, and funded commitment of a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank loan application for the Marietta Road realignment and Hickory Flat Highway improvement project. Ms. Watson?
Thank you. So as you're aware, the city and DDA are currently in the concept phase of the Marietta Road realignment and Hickory Flat Highway improvement project. This project includes realignment of Marietta Road, new roundabout at Hickory Flat Highway, and a new vehicular bridge over Canton Creek. Staff has identified the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank loan program as potential funding source. This would allow us to kind of use our TAD dollars more, spread them out over more years. This loan application would allow us to do a repayment of, of up to 20 years. The resolution shows a loan application amount of $5 million. It will not cover the complete project, but the Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank has a maximum of $16 million to go over the entire state, so they don't want to be too greedy. But this would help us spread out those TAD dollars. So I'm asking for approval tonight because the loan application is due on January 14th, which is before the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. And thank you for your efforts in researching this. We know this is a huge project and important project in our transportation plan and also in our TAD district. So I think it certainly makes sense. What is the interest rate on the loan?
I cannot remember off the top of my head. It's, it's less than 5%. It's pretty low. I think it's like 2.0 something, but I can, I can get that information.
Okay. Thank you. And then, do we, we also received a grant for this project, for the bridge? Or is that the pedestrian bridge?
Yes, which is underway currently.
Okay. So that's not included in, in this?
No, sir.
This is roundabout in the improvements to Hickory Flat Highway. Correct. Okay. Any additional questions for Ms. Watson? Mr. Roach?
With no other questions, I'd like to make a motion, please.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution of support, authorizing, preparation, submission, and funding committee of a Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank loan application for the Marietta Road realignment and Hickory Flat Highway improvement project.
Second.
That's quite a long one. It is halftime over yet. So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Thank you, Ms. Watson. Item C, discussion and resolution for call of general election for November 4th, 2025, and setting qualifying dates, times, and fees. Ms. Fortner?
I gotta turn my mic on. A general election will be held on November 4th, 2025. The council seats that are up for the election are one in Ward 1, one in Ward 2, and one in Ward 3. The election will be conducted by Cherokee County and held at all Cherokee County precincts as specified in the city's intergovernmental agreement. Qualifying for the election will take place at City Hall on Monday, August 18th, from 8:30 AM to 5:00 PM, Tuesday, August 19th, from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, and Wednesday, August 20th, from 8 until noon. A qualifying fee of 3% of the total annual salary of a council member is due at the time of qualifying, and this fee is $360. A qualifying packet will be made available online and in the clerk's office beginning in March. The resolution that was provided calls for the general election as well as setting the qualifying period and fee as required by law.
Thank you, Ms. Fortner. And we'll be voting on that the next meeting?
Yes, a vote will be asked at the next meeting.
Any questions, comments? Okay. Start your engines. We did add item D to the agenda, and that is discussion and possible action on the resolution to endorse Cherokee County State Road and Tollway Authority Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank funding application for construction of Airport Road Spur. This is, we were contacted by Brantley Day with Cherokee County over the holidays, asking if, if we could add this because it is time-sensitive. And, and this is basically just endorsing the project. There's no financial obligation for the city. They are seeking a grant and loan to construct Airport Road Spur, which is Phase 5 and 6 of Technology Ridge Parkway, and a small portion of Phase 3, which will relocate Airport Drive and extend the airport runway from 5,000 to 6,000 feet. And while this project's not in the city limits, it will eventually improve access into the city from the airport and exits North Canton. So basically, any questions on that? I believe afforded to you the resolution and also the map, just showing the project map there. Mr. Waterman? Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution to endorse Cherokee County State Road and Tollway Authority for Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank funding application for construction of Airport Road Spur.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. And we'll get that signed and over to Cherokee County. So we can continue to work on this important project. Okay. You know, our city manager is sailing throughout Hawaiian Islands, so we, we hope he's enjoying his, his time away.
I will quickly comment on one item, Mr. Mayor. The earlier last year, it's gonna be difficult to hand out, last year, the city applied for energy rebate with Georgia Power. I was just notified earlier this morning that we received that award, energy rebate of $14,639. It's toward our HVAC project on City Hall, some of the efficiencies we, we made there. So just wanted to let council know that.
Great news. Appreciate that update. Are there any council introduced items? Just checking. I have a couple of items to attend to this evening. And as, as you're aware, the charter requires me to appoint a mayor pro tem for the coming year. I want to thank Mr. Waterman for his great service in 2024 and his, his, his great work and support during the year. I think you only had to lead one meeting, but that, that's enough. But appreciate your work and, and service, Mr. Waterman. And for 2025, I would like to appoint Mr. Sean Tolan as the mayor pro tem and ask for a second to the nomination and a council vote.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. Congratulations, mayor pro tem, and I'll let you take the next meeting. No. I also have one reappointment to the Main Street Board, and that's Mr. Jack Champagne. There was some confusion of whether his term expired in '24 or '25, but we did confirm expired in '24. So I'd like to reappoint Mr. Jack Champagne to the Main Street Board and thank him for his service to have a second on that.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All members voted for the motion. And that is all I have this evening. Again, I want to wish everyone a happy New Year and look forward to working with this team in the year ahead as we continue to move Canton forward and wish all our citizens and everyone watching a happy, healthy, and prosperous 2025. And I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
I'm not gonna run out on it, though, Bob. It's gonna be tough.